Let's stand and do a quick pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is sand, mission under God, in every sense, liberty and justice for all.
I guess I should take notes then huh?
While we're getting organized here, any quick public comment before we get started? Good.
All right, roll call, Michelle Jackson, Christine Johnson here, general view, and David Coste, and Atten Allen. At the last meeting, which I listened at, I did watch the meeting on Zoom, and I know you guys were talking about the fire department budget. I don't know that you've ever seen this, but we do have a fire department budget that they provide to us. And Derek just said they're about ninety-eight percent done with their budget for this year, and they will have that for us before the, or by the first.
Yeah. First.
And we'll, we'll email that to everybody.
Oh, my God.
Just one thing while we're talking about the fire department, I talked to Greg Bradley a little bit, and he's been doing some checking on the moving of the fifteen thousand dollars into the general fund from the fire fund, and I told him that I would look into it. I know that our auditor in the last audit suggested that we do that.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna talk to him and see what he based that decision on. I told Greg I'd get back to him, so we're gonna do it right. Whatever way is the right way, but.
That money has not officially been moved yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It hasn't.
There is one more payment left that Jeff has not received.
Okay.
That is due him right now.
I've read, I've read those emails, but I like, okay, good, the back part, the thing you and Greg on, good, good, yeah, just so everybody knows what's going on, you know?
Yeah, well, that's good. Yeah, I mean, just to see if it's legal to do it, you know, so that nobody comes back.
I think the auditor, so, who are you to the auditor, isn't that?
Right, I guess if he knows township rules and all that, I mean, I, what you can do, you can take stuff out of budget, because it's, you know.
Because it's all the town, it's all the township, right?
Right.
When it's going, it's raising the reason.
It was voted, the millage is voted for the fire department, you stoned, so our consideration was that it was, it wasn't, it was let go by the township or at that time, it wasn't the fire department. The fire department might have brought up the different issues that were going on at that time, and I'm not sure of all of them, because I haven't read much.
I need that challenge, do you?
Go over that stuff, so he was let go by the township, not by the fire department.
Were any of the people at that time on the board, were they part of the fire department, did they refuse themselves from that?
I have no idea, I don't think. My mouth, I couldn't anything, but.
You couldn't look back through the months?
Yeah.
That's.
Because that would, that would be another, that would be another thing to look into.
I know Greg voted against the payment award consistently.
Yeah. I, I don't know, he was a trustee back then.
He, he was.
Yeah, he was.
Well, would have been a conflict with it. That was really curious, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he might not have been the chief anymore, but he, he did vote in the negative to repay Jeff.
And no other company, the branch, there's some line building on that.
Yeah.
And that was brought up to him multiple times. I, I think a former supervisor backers said that he could not not vote, he had to vote, I don't, I don't keep, yeah.
He kind of agrees, yeah.
If you look back at two thousand eighteen, you'll lie in all the minutes exactly who was on the board and when that whole thing.
I would just say this, though, that Greg is a trustee and he has the obligation to vote. What basis would he not vote on that? I mean, he, he's not giving the money.
Yeah, it's not a personal thing.
It's not a personal thing.
He doesn't, he did the budget for the fire department.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if he was still the chief by then, so he wasn't really doing the budget then. Not saying that he didn't have influence and that kind of thing, but I'm just saying he had no official position other than assistant chief or whatever, what it is this.
At what point did he stop?
He could have been assistant chief at the time, maybe interim chief, because he's obviously, if someone let go, someone has to take that place.
Either way, there was enough votes for it to carry out.
Yeah.
As I remember.
But was he not involved with his son as well, or issue a job, that's the thing, so he didn't have particular.
That could be.
It was wrong for him to be a part of that final decision.
That was a lawsuit that was being settled.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anyway, I just wanted everybody to know that, we're here to do the budget today, so just want to keep us moving, we're short on time as it is.
Um, I just also wanted to show you guys, this is the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget that the former board used to do before I was actually appointed, and all you have there are funged totals. That's, they didn't do line items, cost center, it's just cost center.
Wow.
And it's, it's just very simple.
You're saying it's awesome?
No, I'm saying when I, when I started, that's what they were doing, and I went, oh, no, that's not gonna work, and so I have changed it to what we're doing now. So I just, I just wanted to remind you, also, you know, just, uh.
Can I?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted on the record that just because you were part of that previous board, this is none of this.
Oh, yeah, no, no, and you know, I was just thinking, um, and Deacon attested us, when I was appointed, the QuickBooks were a mess. We had wrong check numbers in our QuickBooks and wrong dollar amounts and wrong payees, and it, it took me forever to kind of reconcile just one month, and, and we got to the point where we, we said, we just have to shut this down. We cannot use this QuickBooks any longer, and Dee created the new chart of accounts, and we opened up a new company, right? And we started fresh from the time that I started with the new budget and the new fiscal year, because the old QuickBooks.
There's no complete QuickBooks, because Melinda lost her.
Yeah, lost.
So there was that big mess there, so.
But she also was very inconsistent in where she assigned things in the chart of accounts, so you couldn't get a clear picture of anything, because she put it in all different places, and I didn't know that until years in, and I could look at it and go, oh, what did she do?
It took you a while to, to comprehend it, to understand the process.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And that was mid last year, how long you been doing it?
Two years, two years now.
Okay, so we had at least one year of, you know, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah.
In one year.
And adjusting everything to.
I just see Dee trying to help.
Yeah, I couldn't have done it without Dee, I couldn't have done it without.
I was just talking to me trying to help, it's on the bridge.
Boy, Jim found a way to run up, up stairs in his office there, um, that had the budget from like fourteen years ago.
Two thousand five, I think it was.
I thought two thousand eleven, yeah, and it was like in a plastic sleeve, and it was so nicely done, and you, you can pull out the numbers, and I'm looking at it, I'm like, wow, this looks great.
It was one barb did.
Okay.
It's probably when Bruce was still in office of the township.
Could be.
So, so it's been improvement.
But it all went by hand too, probably.
No, it wasn't, but it was like, well, it was as if we had some modern D S and A, or I, I don't know, for the time, it really hasn't gotten all nice, oh, yeah.
It began with a P, I think, the program they used, I think.
Peachtree.
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 Oh, yeah.
But I have to say, you know, taken over from the, the treasurer's book union at, from that point, I mean, they were reconciling, of course reconciling against their own numbers, so when we took over, nothing was reconciled correctly.
Oh, so.
So they were off hundreds of dollars, they had to go back to the previous audit fix, and then have them, and so.
All that resolution.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Um, it would be, do you know what that resolution, do you?
The three percent?
Yes.
It's a three percent thousand?
Yeah, so there should, should be a.
That's what it's called.
Uh, I did one, the, the June set.
Well, we're looking for the.
I'm looking for the website right now.
Fire plan that we have, we need to have an updated resolution signed.
I'm gonna be here in trouble.
Oh, that was another question I had, like, I know you guys, um, wanted to include an administration fee. Did you vote on that percent? Because I didn't hear a vote.
I think you went to five percent.
For charging the fire department, Hertz and Roy.
I think we decided on five.
You decided, but was there a vote?
I believe so.
Yeah, I believe we did, but.
I didn't hear it in the meeting.
Oh, there may not have been, which, which was the meeting you're talking about?
The last one.
So.
February first.
February first.
But it may have happened at the one prior to that?
Mm-mm, no. It would have been at the last one, we discussed the percentage.
Yeah. All right.
We talked about it in the previous minute.
And I think we ended up at five percent, it was fair, between four and five percent.
I think we agreed, Chris, well, we didn't vote out, though.
Okay.
What, you did some research on that and looked into the totals?
The township charge is one percent to, 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 um, ring the mill, whatever we have for our village. You guys take one percent out, and now you're telling the town, pardon me?
That's to do the taxes.
Right.
That's what I do with the taxes, that's not what we do to earn them.
Right, I get it, but you know what that amount is for the fire department?
We can get it to you.
I know what it is, it's ten thousand dollars a year. So I would like to know how much time is spent on the fire department every month, not fair is fair.
Sure.
Well, that portion is taxed, that, that is separate, so Dee, do you?
That portion comes out of the people, that, their, their, so that doesn't come out of your portion, that's their administrative fee. It comes out when it's divided in the taxes, it comes off of the taxes being paid in, that's not coming from the fire department.
Well, I get it, but it's money we don't get.
You, you wouldn't give it anything.
All of that.
Because it's a per cent fee that we charge the, the taxpayers, and it's, it's not from what we're taking from the fire department, it's coming from the, the, us doing that portion. It's not anything that you would get, it would just be taken off the total of the taxpayers' bill. It comes on their bill, you'll see it on bottom of the bill, it's administrative fee, it's coming out of their portion of their taxes that they're paying. So it's a one percent overall of what the tax, so if you pay a hundred dollars, we're taking a hundred dollars from you to take care of all that administrative fee.
Right, and then it's gonna jump up to like five hundred then?
I'm sorry.
It would jump up to five hundred?
No, that's a separate, that's a totally separate fee for that fee that we were discussing, that's, that's our taxes, those are two different things. So that's administering what they do for the fire department, for doing paychecks, payrolls, stamp envelopes, investing money, anything that has to do. But what she's explaining to you is that the money comes off the top of the taxes from the taxpayer, not from the fire department to the general fund.
So say we get this roughly two hundred dollars a month for the fire department, so none of that money comes out of that.
No, you guys are still getting mileage, you're still getting your money, yeah.
So it's just you're taxing up above and beyond to the taxpayers, it's just what you're going.
The taxpayer pays the one percent admin fee when they pay their taxes.
Right. So, but that wouldn't take effect till what tax period?
Well, we pay in a year, so what they paid last time was for twenty twenty-four, so what they would be paying in the summer taxes are then gonna be for twenty twenty-five.
Right, so it's gonna show a five percent admin fee for each millage?
And, and what that, what do you mean, no?
No, the taxes are separate than that admin fee for doing the administrative work.
We're doing a general fund right now, completely different, that's without a tax, that's a tax related thing, it doesn't have a tax.
Right.
Doesn't have.
Let me see if I get this straight, okay, so we go ahead and charge them the five percent fee, okay, it doesn't change the amount that they receive, this is gonna come out of the admin fees that we collect for the entire.
No, yeah.
No, the five percent fee would be the fire department paying the administrative portion of the township, the general, so it pays Christine, it pays us for doing deposits, the investments, her the payroll, paying the bills, matching her receipts, all the stuff that she does in the office that we do in the office, or even, I don't know, we decide a maintenance or whatever, it's gonna be on top of that. I mean, they could go ahead and hire a secretary and do all that stuff, I don't know, it's legal though, with the checks and stuff, but I mean, it's covering, it's covering all that, like, when we order checks for the fire department.
Okay, I understand that we need to get paid somewhere to do the admin stuff, I'm just curious, you, you said it comes out of the one mil that we get.
No, they're two separate things.
They're two separate.
Yeah, the taxes are totally separate, I mean, you have the administrative fee that's already coming from the taxes.
Okay.
That's from the millage and the cap, you know, the.
Okay, so it's just gonna reduce their amount that they receive, is what I'm trying.
No, I, no, I don't believe it does.
Okay, well, then where does that money come from, the admin fee?
It comes from the, the parcels, and the property owners pay that one percent fee.
That's what I, I thought I just asked, if that was.
But it doesn't come from their, it doesn't.
There's two admin fees.
Yeah.
We're talking, yeah.
Two.
We're talking taxes, and then we're talking.
They're both, you're calling them both the same thing, it's, it's creating confusion.
Fire department admin fee is the one that we're voting on, the five percent, that's completely different, that's what we do in the office.
Okay, and that comes out of the money that they get?
That's not a tax admin fee, it's.
That would come out of their budget, they would budget that.
Township admin fee, not a tax admin fee, a township admin fee.
Right, so what we're voting on the five percent would come out of their budget. They're paying somebody, they're paying somebody in the office to do all the clerical, the bookkeeping, the, that's, that's their stuff that they're paying, because as of right now, they're not really paying.
Yeah, and I see the conversation we have in that work was that you're gonna pay it your way, whether you pay it this way or pay someone. No, I get that, but I think it's excessive, that's ten thousand dollars. I talked to Christine, and she said, I, I maybe spend two hours a month, three hours a month on your stuff, paying bills and doing payroll, because I do all the payroll, it's sent to her in Excel spreadsheet. She plugs in the numbers. So now that your statement was untrue, that we are still gonna be less ten thousand dollars out of our fire department budget.
I don't know, not with, okay, with that, with that portion of five percent, yes, you're paying that in your, in your budget. The one, you know, when I said that, it was the one percent isn't coming out of your.
I get that, yeah, I get that.
The, but, yes, you would be paying that out of your budget, you'd be paying a M and B, there's other ways.
Now, is there a statutory duty for the clerk to pay our bills, because it's township?
Yeah.
No.
No, like, when I was talking to the auditor, I don't know, I don't know if you legally, I mean, you legally have to take care of the checks and stuff.
Yeah.
But when I was talking to the auditor, most townships that have the stuff in the fire department like this pay the admin fee, because it's not matching your receipts and investing your money, and it's still work to be done, not just because it's, I don't think that has anything to do with statutory duty. We're still paying the clerk to do that out of the general fund.
Right.
And if the fire department puts that in their annual budget to cover that, it's, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I, I know, only no other township in Calcasper that does this, Manassarum, no other township does this. I just want to put it in the context, and great, you guys can vote on it, that's fine.
Appreciate you being here too, by the way.
Right, I, I, I think it's a money grant, but ten thousand dollars could outfit a firefighter, I could train him for one year. So let's put it in context, so let's say our budget is, you know, we operate at zero budget every fiscal year. So that ten thousand dollars, like, say I, I get a firefighter that comes in, hey, I wanna get trained. Oh, well, I can't train you this year because I'm out of money, I can't afford to outfit you in an outfit, I can't afford to train you because I'm paying a five percent admin fee. So don't know if it would ever come to that, but if it did, that would be pretty bad, that I couldn't train somebody because we're taking an admin fee out. And I don't mind paying for stuff that I, I, we, you know, if I gotta pay Christine to do the bills, I'll, I'll gladly do it myself if I can.
Well, we know.
Or I pay somebody to do the snowplow, I don't mind paying Craig to plow or to cut grass, if he keeps his hours, I'll cut a check. I don't have a problem with it, but it's gotta be fair. You can't just charge ten thousand dollars and, and you don't, you put in half of that, it may be four or five thousand. You know, I don't have a problem paying for what we owe on the fire department. And I think it's unfair just to put that five percent out there and, you know, just, just charge us ten thousand dollars.
So how much are we paying right now on postage, because I noticed on the breakdown that the postage that's coming out of the treasurer, is that strictly, is the treasurer's office?
That's strictly taxes.
Paying for, so it's strictly taxes.
Those are the, the fire department's pay for, um, postage.
Postage to pay their bills?
No, yeah.
No, it, yeah, like ten, ten bills.
So I mean, like, it's roughly two, three hours involved, maybe a little time.
Well, it would be a percentage, I mean, in fact, whatever, I don't think that it's a.
We just count the difference of the charges.
I don't think it's something where we say, well, we're not gonna pay it, because we do work, and it's not just the clerk doing work, but it's not just payroll that she's doing either, she's managing receipts, because you got credit cards, we're reconciling base accounts, we're running deposits, we're, um, investing the money, I mean, there's a lot more stuff going on than just her doing payroll, and whether it be answering phone calls, doing mailings, doing, you know, just paying bills, and, and, I mean, there's more stuff going on, but if you redo the percentage, I mean, if you get like ten percent or ten thousand.
Yeah, I think redoing the percentage is a good idea, for sure, but, um, you know, Derek brought up a good point, it is statutory duty for me to create warrants to pay bills, it is statutory duty for the treasurer to do deposits.
We're not denying that, neither is the auditor, the auditor's saying it's.
So I get a salary for that, and she gets a salary for that, I don't think we have this.
But they have a separate budget, they have a separate budget, we don't control their budget, we, they have a separate budget, and they have a separate building, some places charge rent for the building.
Okay, he, he's not denying that he should be paying something, I think we just need to work, maybe the five percent is a little excessive.
We talked between four and five percent, this is where, and I think when we ended, we were at five percent.
How, what, what do you propose, and what do you have to support that proposal?
One other question with that, is how did you arrive at that ten thousand dollar figure?
I think our, I think our, between our two millages, one's a fire equipment village.
No, we're not doing that, my equipment.
Yeah. Oh, you're not doing that, I mean, it's like twenty thousand, okay.
Yeah.
With that, ten thousand.
Yeah, but he's looking at, that's why I asked how we.
Well, like I said, I, I, I like that, but it's.
I think we did five thou, I think it was five thousand.
Yeah, that's what it was.
I mean, that, it was hearsay, basically, like, I, I just heard it was the vote, so.
So you wanted to hear it, we didn't hear it.
I, I did, well, I didn't have any calculation of, like, hey, like, sit down, call me.
So where did you get the ten thousand dollar figure?
Well, that would have been from both, from both millages.
Yeah, that's what we just.
That would be on the food management, you know, the cows, because we do manage what counts, we should have, but, but it was only on the, um, fire department, the fire fund.
Well, I, I think when we originally proposed this, I had an idea where I said five hundred a month would be six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, that's, it's not ten, but.
I mean, did it include the plowing and taking care of, you know, cutting grass, no, that stuff, I'm like, I don't.
I don't think that it includes maintenance, that was the actual administrative piece of the puzzle.
Well, collectively, what do you think we're spending time-wise to take care of the fire department's paperwork needs?
Well, I can tell you all the stuff we do, but I don't know how many hours, I mean, it's blended in, so that's why we were trying to figure out, I mean, it's not just the clerk doing stuff, it's the treasurer's problem. And even with, like, the grants that come in, they come into the general funds, there's transfers, there's filed those on Sigma, and figuring out where those go, because a lot of times we're moving maneuver mills, you got deposits, you've got investments, you have reconciled, you have paying the bills, matching the receipts, you know what I mean, so I think five hundred a month was fine for all kinds.
And I think it fell right into four to five percent, so that, that five hundred a month, I think when you did it on paper, it fell into that five percent. Because if we went one percent or we went three percent, it was less than what you proposed at five hundred dollars.
If that's a non-statutory duty, and I spend three hours a month doing fire department stuff, that's sixty dollars.
It's not about statutory, not statutory, at this point, you have your statutory duties, and that's all you, I mean, that's all your responsibility, or she's the only responsible, that doesn't, just because you're statutory duty, it doesn't mean that it's, you know what I mean, you can't, your duties are your duties, we're not any of it, I, I want above and beyond, so.
I'm just, a cost, uh, is what I'm talking about, three hours is sixty dollars a month, so that's for me, and, and you put in.
And you spent, and that's, that's matching the receipts to the credit cards.
Yeah.
That's paying any bills that come in for them, because you go through each consumer, when they come in, you had to separate the, the account numbers in each one, and I don't know, I think it's more than that, I think when it's done, set and done, and then deposits, running the deposits, and she's going to the bank and reconciling, trying to reconcile both accounts, and paying them, I, I think it's more than that, I think he's.
For me, I'm, I'm just saying for me.
Because I get to measure with running to the bank, I mean, I'm more than willing, willing to put in mileage.
Yeah, because we don't.
It's expensive.
I don't, what are you going at the bank for, with the?
The habits, maybe deposits.
All of the tax, all of the tax money that comes, yeah, she made, she's running, and.
Oh, like that ongoing thing, because I, I'm not sure.
She would be doing that irregardless if we had fire department or not.
I mean, if you're going.
I mean, it's new, that's not a point, though, I mean, they have their own budget, and, I mean, are you expecting us to do that for nothing then? I mean, it's, it's a way for the general fund to recoup some money that is being spent on hours for, you know, whoever, and time in the salary, that, you know, the time, so I, whether it be, it's not ten thousand, I don't think five thousand per year is much to ask to do the administrative stuff that gets done, and sort of.
That's half of what we originally were talking about, so I don't know that, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't have a problem, I said, I don't have a problem paying.
And we're the second highest, you know, township they've paid in, I mean, we, there's a lot going on, um, as far as.
What if we were to do this, just, and, and again, we can adjust this next year or whenever.
We don't really, it's not a week, five months.
Right, what if we just said, okay, we're charging one hundred dollars a week, fifty-two hundred dollars a year to do your admin fees, would that be a little more agreeable?
I mean, yeah, it would be a little bit more agreeable, I mean, I just would, like, I guess an outline of what exactly what you're doing, does it include the maintenance stuff?
Okay.
Is that gonna be above and beyond what, and I need to pay for more?
Part of the commitment of you paying will be a commitment from us to document that and adjust it next year realistically.
Yeah.
Well, I think maintenance is paid from other, um, uh, from other sub-accounts, so like, if he goes, it, it maintains, it's working on the sub- on the cemetery, then the cemetery is paying for the time that he, it's all coming out of the general.
Yeah, it's all general.
And he gets paid out of general, but they keep track of it, and they should keep track of what he's doing, or not, but.
That's maintenance, not fire department.
Well, he's saying maintenance is included, and that, I mean, that was.
No, I just asked, no, I just asked the question, if it would be.
Yeah, maintenance would be, I mean, a, a lot more, and we had talked about whether.
Yeah, that's why.
Well, he's got to keep track of his hours, that's just, it'd be very wild, wild, you know, it could be a snow plowing day every day for, you know.
Yeah, we weren't including that in the admin fee, the admin fee has been, okay, that's.
No, no, yep.
And then my only other question was where did the tom, the ten thousand dollars, where did that float around from?
That's, I already answered that, it was between both millages, between the regular fire village and.
So somebody just said to you, hey, they're gonna charge you.
Well, yeah, it was hearsay, I, I didn't have any combination, no one approached me about this, like, hey, there, like, do you think this is fair as a fire chief, like, do you think this is fair, this is what we're proposing? Yeah, it could have been, right, it could have been a discussion beforehand, you don't go forward coming to this, you know?
Probably coming to the budget meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it can't be discussed in the budget meeting.
Right, exactly, no, I, I get it.
Greg was on the Zoom with us when we were talking, so we did have some input from the fire department.
Yeah.
It should have been with you.
Yeah, well, that's where I got the information from, and I, he thought it was both, because I asked him, I said, is it just whether a regular fire village or is this both, equipment and fire push? So, and he said, well, I believe it would be both, so.
Okay, well, uh, since we didn't vote on it before, um, I'll make a proposal that we consider that a hundred dollar a week, fifty-two hundred dollars a week.
Then I don't give more in the long, yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't.
No, it was a ten thousand, we did five percent of the fire fund mileage, which was like five thousand, so now we're at fifty-two hundred.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to make it consistent, you know, because.
Right, so do you wanna do five percent of the fire fund, or do you wanna do a hundred dollars?
What is the fire fund revenue?
I don't have a clue.
Derek knows.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, last year, it was a hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred for property tax allocated.
Always go to four percent, see where it goes from there, and if you guys keep track of the hours, and it, 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 it croaks, it croaks, you know, goes over that, then we can reevaluate it the following year.
Yeah, I think we did about eight thousand forty-five dollars, I think was the five percent, eight thousand forty-five was the five percent, so that we're doing fifty.
I was like, really, you guys said five thousand.
Five percent's too much.
Well, we went between four and five, we weren't definitive on five.
That's, that's true.
So four percent would be right.
All right, so I'll throw it out there, fifty-two hundred dollars a year, sound good for a starting point.
Yeah, and then we can revisit it at the next budget.
Is that okay with you, Derek?
I, I mean, it's fine, yeah, I mean, I.
And again, we'll, we're gonna, and I'll write it into the resolution that we'll monitor in some way, and.
Right.
You know, if we get to a point where we're, um, let's say we use twenty-five hundred of that, right?
Yeah.
We can always put the twenty-five hundred that we don't.
Well, I get it, yeah, I mean, it's just like, I'd be fair, like, whatever hours you put in, keep track of it, I get, I get, here it's paying, but it's, it's that, it's full size, and it's fair, and it's even.
And I just wanna say, as a board member, I totally respect the fire department and what you do, and it is definitely not to grab money from the fire department, and I don't know where that came from, it surely did not come from our budget meeting.
Yeah.
So the leaking hearsay or whatever people interpreted is, is not correct, it should just come straight to the source.
No, and I get it, yeah, and I get communications, you know, lax.
The, the term has been tossed around. The, the term has been tossed around quite a bit that, well, the fire department has money, the fire department has, they have more money than we do.
Right. You know, we don't do.
So, yeah. Expenses are higher to run as well.
Right.
They can stay with their budget because not often do you get like whammy of, I mean, you get a garage order in there apparently, but.
Right, yeah.
You know, I mean, so it's, it's hard for the general fund to stay in budget because you get nailed with a lot of different things coming in. And I think because they're so extremely over budget the last four years, that it's like, okay, it, in what areas has this been detrimental to the budget? You know, budgets aren't revisited, they haven't been revisited, readjusted, and so, I mean, and it is something that is taking place. I don't know if it's taking place in the immediate surrounding townships, but it is taking place not only to charge an admin fee, but also charge rent on the building, which we had hoo-hooed. At the last one, we said, no, we're not gonna do that, but the maintenance, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, all that, that building's been funded by millages, it was that farm.
Yeah.
Um, and operated, it's always been done with fire by both.
Yeah. From what I understand, if you're not the maintenance guy, has he always been paid out of the general fund to maintain the fire department?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that's what they were looking at was, well, maybe if the fire department, you know, has a loan or has something they wanna pay to do it, rather than have the maintenance guy.
And we can, I mean, we've done that in the past, when, when Leo, I think, when he, when he had left and we didn't really have anybody, we did hire somebody.
Yeah. Yeah. And he used it.
Cause we even have an extra truck that the fire, we slapped on the block.
Yeah, we, that's, that's just a bad.
Oh, come on, you gotta.
Yeah. An experienced operator was, I think, being a shot, and it was a few long, so.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah. No, and yeah, I get it, like, our, our budget, we, we're trying to build up like Renegade, like Capital Farm. You know, because fire maintenance nowadays, it takes four years to get it, and just the engine that we have now is a twenty thirteen. And it's, you know, that rig is probably like close to seven, eight hundred thousand dollars now. We probably paid two something for it back then.
So Derek, the, the other question is, you're here, um, so you're paying on a loan right now.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where we're at with it. I don't have the finances, but I'm wondering if we, we, you know, we're investing that money?
Yeah.
And it's typically five percent of low that we're getting investment. I don't know if the interest rate is, and I wonder if we should pay that off?
Yeah. It's, it's pretty cheap on the, our engine tender, but what I am gonna pay off is our PAC loan.
Okay.
So we got some new air packs, it was about a hundred thousand dollars to get those, just kind of, so. Um, but we're thinking about paying that, because the, the interest rate's a little higher on that.
I just didn't know as far as like putting it into Michigan class, because there is money and, you know, just.
Yeah.
And we say that's a move it for day.
Yeah.
So, um, we were just looking at that, like, to be, you know, the equipment, you know, the mortgage, and, and the loan.
Right. Right. Yeah, well.
I, 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 yeah, I would've given, but I think it's, um, three or four percent, I probably got for that engine tender, so.
The former board voted on that truck, the board I was on made the first payment, so it's probably four hundred.
Yeah. Yeah.
Four years now.
Yeah. We don't have much on what they're wanting, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, uh, begin the admin fee collection process with the fire department at one hundred dollars a month, fifty-two hundred dollars a year.
You know, a week.
I'm sorry, well, it's fifty-two hundred a year.
Yeah, we did that, all right. Your math didn't work, but.
New math.
Yeah, super bad.
I mean, I'd like it to be tracked, but if you're gonna, gonna track it and possibly reimburse it, that's gonna be put in there into the motion, like, hey, we're tracking. If we did send the fifty-two hundred dollars, we'll give you reimbursement, but like, at least have that in there, so that if it's tracked, I don't, like I said, fair is fair. If, if, if it's close, I don't care, like, you know, like, I don't want it to be grossly in somebody else's favor one way or the other, so.
Well.
I think it's hard to track, honestly, if I'm gonna be honest, it's gonna be hard to track.
Yeah.
It is.
It'd be hard to track. I think that we have a waiting at the next budget, like, hey, fifty-two hundred dollars, we're to grapes.
Because. It's random.
You know what I mean? As far as that, then let's not change it, but it looks like, yeah, we could maybe go to ninety dollars a week or something like revisited at the physical year. But I think it's gonna be really hard to gauge and.
If anything, I think just having a discussion about it would make us more aware of how much time to spend on it.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I think it would be hard to check, because it's here and there. It's like, I don't like it, the credit cards, oh, let's match them up, you know, because we have this, or, oh, it's not that set, okay, we're gonna do all fire fund today.
Okay, is there a second for the one hundred dollars?
My second.
Okay.
And with that motion, I just ask, come to budget meeting and ask, and not hearsay?
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Okay.
And I think it could go both ways too, like, I guess if you're discussing, like, hey Derek, we're gonna be discussing fire department stuff, do you wanna come in? I mean, I work a full-time job. I have baggage, just like everybody else, so, but just simple phone call or email, like, hey, we're gonna discuss this admin fee with the fire department.
Me too. Yeah.
Be transparent and be like, hey, you might wanna come to the meeting.
When we're doing the budgets, I think.
Right, and if I don't come, shame on me, shame on me if I didn't come and I was notified, but I was never notified that you were gonna talk about that, so.
I think that when we have budget meetings and we're doing the physical.
We didn't, yeah.
All right, we need to do a roll call, though.
That everybody should, all the department should come to budget meeting.
I don't think it was planned.
Yeah, it was not, so people, but.
Okay, roll call vote. Wait, wait, no, it's not a I, it's a roll call. David Cost?
Yes, hi.
General view, yes. Michelle Jackson, Christine Johnson, yes. Thank you.
All right, now we have done it officially.
And then I only asked, is that gonna be spread across the other millages, I'm assuming, so it's fair, so that it's on their departments.
Well, we don't do.
Parks and Racks.
There are no employees.
Well, we don't do employees, we don't do insurance, we don't do, I mean, there's, we don't match receipts. I mean, it's not the same, it's really not apples to apple. The road is, it's a same count, I mean, there's not, there's not the extra admin stuff.
Right, but there's, I, I know they were getting a loan for the roads, like, that would take time to research it, do all that. Uh, Parks and Racks, there's.
I don't do that, but okay.
There's grants, you talked about us for grants, you process grants.
Parks and Racks be discussed, yeah, so roads are kind of a.
If it's a lower amount, but I'd be saying, can't, you know, you're kinda doing everything all at once, I mean, fair is fair.
Yeah. There are. Issues. We do pay bills for roads.
But I don't think that there's, I think that's included in the, yeah, I mean, I don't know, but I don't, I don't.
You can look and you can see how many roads.
You've got. Yeah, it's.
Parts.
I don't.
It's not, it's not, well, I mean, not all the time, but yeah.
You know, there's not much. There's no payroll, there, I mean, we do nothing for them, but that's not.
No, but there's still revenue.
Right, the amount of money that they have, I can believe we find with four or five percent, so.
Record keeping.
I think just, you guys have.
I think it's within.
I think it's, okay, it's good, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think it's within the rights to do that, I mean, I know that the fire department's treated differently because it is, you know, like a full budget, you know, payroll, employee, you know.
Yeah.
It is different, but there is something there though too, for the other.
Two similarities.
So would there be a percentage that we would think would be fair for the other funds that are managed?
I think four to five percent if they have a millage there.
Well, I don't know, we don't, we don't have to work there. There's no payroll, there's no, so you write checks. There's no bills that you pay for, uh, the, the big ones.
Reconcile it still.
Yeah.
Postage.
Reconcile isn't much for them because there's hardly any.
No, no.
What does the fifty-two hundred turn out to be? Three percent, which is I think what we initially went with on the fire department?
That would be for their millage, we don't, we wouldn't know what the.
So four percent is sixty-four, thirty-six.
So that would be about like three and a half percent, three, three and a half percent, so I mean, three percent across the board, probably three, three and a half percent. I mean, that's not gonna be quite to a hundred dollars a month.
I, I actually would recommend two and a half. I mean, because you're looking at, you're looking at funds that don't have a lot of activity.
So we're just saying two and a half, or, or paying three and a half.
Because they must stop that we do.
They, yeah, there's a lot, there's more, we pay payroll and other. Does that sound fair to you? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's fair, like, I, I mean, I mean, I could do it myself too, but I don't think you guys would allow me to do that.
I don't think, I don't think we can.
The township has to do that. Do you know?
Yeah.
Any of the other options, you can get a fire board, and they can, they can handle the budget.
That's for just nuts, yeah.
Are you doing?
Just didn't come out right.
It's still very smart, this board.
Yeah, David's on, we're still.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're doing a fine job sitting.
Yeah.
You go feeding, I don't need anybody else, I'm doing great.
And no, on, on the other, you're paying for anything, you're volunteering.
Yeah.
The rates are volunteer, it goes to the.
Yeah, that's not statutory duty. I don't know for sure, I don't know, it's like sixty thousand.
No, I get it. Six.
Yeah, that's what we have for, I think about, quarterly, no, it's gonna be, no, no, it won't be.
Yeah.
Three hundred and forty thousand per year.
Three, it is, three hundred and forty thousand a year.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-eight per mill, or a hundred and seventy-five per mill.
Times two and a half percent. Is eighty-five hundred dollars.
We threw the numbers around a little.
Okay, a quarter or two and a half percent is four thousand and twenty-two for Derek.
So we are right when we had said five percent. He just was under the impression that it was five percent under both funds. We did, we cr- we crunched all these numbers, and it was under the five, it was, it was five percent from the fire fund. When we were within that hundred dollars a week, fifty-two hundred dollars.
No, that's the, for roads.
Two and a half, well.
Two and a half percent?
For roads.
No, no, it's not, it was just recalculating.
Oh. That's, oh, okay, okay, yeah, two and a half.
So we can find a percentage to hit them always.
Oh, okay.
And I, I'm a different parent after we've born you.
I do too.
Yeah. Well, just leave that then, we've already passed that?
We've passed that, but we, if we're gonna add to the budget, the other funds as well, we need to motion for those.
Okay.
But I think Dee's right, they're different than fire.
I think the road is like a one percent, one and a half percent. I mean, it's very, it's very minimum we do for that fund. And then Parks and Rec is a little bit more, but a lot less than fire department, because they don't have payroll, they don't have, you know. We still invest, we still reconcile the account, but there's hardly any transactions. If there is the big tran, you know, I mean, they're spending big.
And as they grow, it may be different if we're revisiting them, then that's physical budget.
Okay, so one and a half percent would be fifty-four hundred for roads. That's closer to what the fire department is paying.
I don't think we cha, we need a hundred dollars a week for roads, for admin fee.
No, that's one and a half percent. So one percent?
Say fifty dollars.
Yeah.
One and a half?
No, I mean, one or a half.
One or a half, oh, okay.
I just don't think, so the taxes, we get paid basically, to do all the taxes, we get paid one percent of all the taxes and then. That's, I, I think that's like, so. We don't write, a lot of we write checks on that too, but I don't, I don't know, road fund, we just barely do anything with the.
Why don't we just, uh.
Because if we are to be a money grab, we would go, there's more money in the road fund, let's just charge that percent.
Yeah, that's what we do.
And then our public would be so angry because they want the roads fixed, or they don't wanna take money out of that fund for anything else.
Right.
What, what if we, um, instead of a percentage with the roads and parking rack, what if we just went with a flat fee, like?
Here's something also to think about.
Twelve hundred a year, be a hundred dollars a month for taking care of roads, two checks or one check or whatever it is.
I think that that would be fine, do six hundred at one tax collection.
Yeah.
So also, aside from the fire department, any of the interest that we collect, a financial of the pad, we get. It doesn't go to those that were, so the road, well, the road, we can't, we can't keep their interest. But I'm just letting you know too, that we, we make, there's money there for the general funds when we collect that, so that might recur following.
The road.
Might not road, you're right. And, and Parks and Rec is, I guess, I mean, yeah.
The accounts with mileage, is that, bank accounts with mileage, is that what you're, what we're?
Right.
Yes.
So the only ones we're doing in admin fee are the bank accounts with mileage?
Yeah.
I think twelve hundred dollars annually.
And how about half that for Parks?
I think so, until they grow, if we're revisiting them every year.
Parks, again, forty-two thousand a year, so.
Yeah, Parks, Parks doesn't wanna take anything else out of their budget.
Twelve hundred for roads, six hundred for Parks.
Six hundred, we can do more for Parks, maybe we'll be for roads.
Yeah.
I think it's twelve hundred for Parks, six hundred for roads.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
And we would revisit it, we would revisit it in, in a budget year.
Yes, I think we, we need to revisit them all the time, but, yeah.
Yeah. So that it's fair to the departments.
And we haven't talked to Parks and Rec or Roads about this yet, so.
See, I remember.
Right.
I'm sure it'll be leaked to some.
That's on top, that's on top of the end for some of the Michigan class.
That goes to Jim.
I, I was trying to understand what you said.
Well, I thought, and I, and that was kinda front of her, I'm sorry.
Motion by the admin fee, twelve hundred a year for Parks and Rec, and six hundred a year for Road, then that's perfect.
I agree.
That's a hundred bucks a month.
Okay, motion by Jim. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote, David Cost?
Yes.
Michelle Jackson?
Yeah.
Christine Johnson, yes, Jim Lefew?
Yes.
Okay. One absent. And motion buried.
Thank you, Derek.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so on our budget, I know you guys had a total income of somewhere around five eleven, I, I didn't.
That's what we came up with, yes.
I didn't see the, uh.
I have it right here, here it is. Then you had just a little bit. Sorry, there's so many versions below the, great.
I have more than anybody.
It's like, hey, we asked Leep's bird. This is where I got.
Maybe I'm writing on it, oh, I am.
Derek.
That's what I got too.
Derek, do you have the amount that you have in the Michigan class and what for?
I do, yeah, I just got the reset for now.
Well, here's where that, how you got to that five of them.
Right.
And, but we have. Because they don't toss that, like, what you're paying an interest on a lot of, but that is your little interest in that Michigan class. It's been something that they should.
I would be confused.
Creation, yeah, no, I'm gonna probably probably pay out a hundred back, that's.
Which we're gonna make sure that we.
Yeah.
And we have the money in it.
It's, it's just.
It doesn't make sense.
It adds always.
Yes.
Yeah.
Fifty-two million.
We depend on.
I think it's just our interest. Haven't been done before, no, I don't.
I'm just charging a party for an admin fee.
I get everybody.
I mean, you work a lot, you get Derek over high as well.
Was that?
Do you work directly a lot with Derek over high?
I do, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we, uh, achieve meeting every quarter, you know, yeah, we talk. We go on a lot of runs, yeah, we go on a lot of runs, they're a little different, we were going to set up, you know, basket options.
All right, so looking at, what was I looking at, I was looking at last year's. Um, budget, the total expenditures for the year were, let me get that to the bottom of that. Five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, so, um. We are well below what our total expenditures are with income. Still, it's good. No.
No, we've heard of that, look, right.
You're the other way, way, way over the. So the other way.
She's trying to be graceful with it. I'm one of the ones, way over that budget.
But there are, you know, if you look at the profit and loss, there are some places that we can probably reduce the budget amount, um. Let me get to that. But there are also things that we're not even budgeted that need to be added, so I don't know how we're gonna get through this in the next hour.
Everyone, right?
Yeah. Oh.
The sky's gonna open up.
Uh, let me see. So we had about.
All these negative things.
We had, we had about a thousand dollars extra under board of review, they budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars for board of review, but they never. Expend that much, do they even have another meeting before the end of the fiscal year?
March fourth.
March fourth, there is one more meeting, so we'll have.
Then we have two more after that.
Two, well, those will be in the new fiscal year.
Nope, still in March.
Oh, still in March.
March fourth, yeah, three more.
Oh, okay.
This year.
And, and they do quarterly timesheets, so I think that is the quarterly amount that we pay. So, yeah, it's a little, okay, so not a lot there, remember. Um, what else was I seeing?
A trend where we're paying a lot has probably sent terrorists.
Who is desperately trying to meet with us, some campuses. That one you're mine?
We're over budget.
We heard them too.
Yeah. To them.
Garbage disposal because of the spring thing up, um, we, we're over budget on cemetery because of having to remove the body. Oh, zoning, that's where it was, there was a. Fifty-six thousand dollar budget for zoning. And we have not spent near that because we no longer have the contract, so we have a little extra in zoning. Oh, it's a fifty-nine thousand dollar budget, sorry. And we've only spent twenty of that, maybe twenty-one. So we can reduce the zoning budget. The total zoning. For the three quarters.
The thirty-nine something.
That's what's left, that's the balance, sorry, fifty-nine thousand. But we still have one more quarter to go on that.
But we're gonna be spending less than.
Yeah.
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah, probably, so, I mean, we'd still have, uh, we, I would say thirty-five thousand possibly left out of zoning. So to, you know, just to make sure we're not.
Over budget.
Under budgeting them, I would say thirty thousand, drop that in thirty thousand, so make it.
Make it nine seventeen.
The total budget amount for them instead of fifty-nine, make it twenty-nine. And move that thirty thousand somewhere else.
We're still on zoning, right? Yes.
Yeah, we're just looking for where we can.
We got a lot of negative numbers over here on the far side, all these print, these things are negative, yes, so we gotta fill in those gaps a little bit.
But if you look at the total, that's the, that's the one you really have to look at, but the line items are just the individual line items. The totals are, as long as you're not in the negative on the total, you're good.
Like the new equipment. Thirty-five thousand dollars in the mail.
New set in the floor.
Right here.
Oh, that's fire department.
Or does.
We don't have to look at that.
Send it to fire.
Yeah, yeah. Your, your general fund ended, right?
You have a miniature copy of that?
Um.
You wanna make a copy of mine?
No.
Cause that's why we can, your other contract and then which in terms, we're at almost seventy thousand dollars. At the end of the, but that's.
Seems to fund that.
They need so much money.
Well, our guys, the other contract, this will be budgeted sixty thousand.
I'll take one too. Okay, I made my copies.
I'm, I'm good.
Oh.
That'll save you three.
Yeah, ready?
Yeah.
I'd be just curious, you know, what we're paying for, and I guess meeting with them might turn that question, doesn't it? But it literally took them three days to figure out what it's wrong with. And I'm sure they're gonna charge for that, cause they had to go to the.
Should've been included in the original setup.
Of the organization, so I can't, uh, get them to make the docs.
So.
Oh, right. Uh, well, I think the problem is that she didn't follow the general contract accounts for when she input the checks. So she can't just look at other contracts. And that's kind of what we went looking for. Yes, or she not loving that, and it's, it's the, uh, the, you know, that's. Yes, and it's, uh, after that government, for the drives, it's clear water works for the water things. But it's, um, it's some hours on the air for their contract. Jim, I believe. Yeah, it's a top, yeah. They have.
Yeah, because I'm just like, when I think about it, to, that was just a mind with the water, you know, the amount of money.
You know, I think that's the, the big cost was the, I would just imagine, but, you know, which was the same on the S I, you had that big cost.
Before showing up at the month.
Well, yeah, we have that too. Yeah, and it's a pretty big thing.
Yeah, and it's like ten thousand dollars, fifteen hundred bucks just for the. Yes, that's why I like to, you know.
We have to call them for the action.
Yes, and I like to, when, I would like to meet with them and.
I think they're.
Just by, because when I spoke to them, we have like three licenses to Microsoft, then we're also under their, they'll be paying for licensing. Maybe it's not.
There's a slow one.
Oh.
All right, so looking at the, we need to get somewhere through the, through the expenses. And I know, I know that you guys talked about raising salaries for like trustees and, and everybody across the board, but I think we better wait on that until we can get that number reduced. Somewhere.
I agree with that.
So, let's see. Under social security, that can't be right. Payroll taxes are, payroll taxes are paid.
That's for recreation.
For some reason, we budgeted thirty-three thousand, right? Don't know why.
You're so scared?
Yeah.
You have to pay your social security, right?
You do, but it's not thirty-three thousand.
I wouldn't think that you got high in the number, really.
Or maybe it is, because Medicare's eight thousand, what is the action? Taxes must.
So you're on the township board control, that's where we're at.
Yeah.
We can see from drill.
Yeah. All expenses. Yeah, payroll expenses are at a total of twenty-eight thousand right now.
Well, I just see.
And it's about seven thousand. So it's a total of forty-eight thousand, so that's pretty.
That add up to a lot of money.
Yeah, right? A little something.
Yeah, when everybody says, oh, but that's minor, but you start adding up.
Yeah.
Like if we're paying for money and everything, why aren't we just buying that, so like cost of the stamp, and sticking within our thing? Like, we also do uniforms. I mean, there's, they're rolling through, but you add like three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Where's you guys?
Um.
I think I have two different versions.
payments. And there are also longer. Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, that should be just. Yeah, don't.
Yeah, so I mean, you start adding up continental linens, and again, you know, yeah, it's a little here, a little there, but guess what, it's a lot of money.
Well, that's just. If you look at the contract services, we paid a hundred and two thousand, a hundred and sixty-seven in twenty-three, twenty-four, but we only budgeted sixty. And still under budget for this year, so budgeting sixty, we're still good. Um, question for you, Dee's, I think the, uh. Is it the remote deposits, we're paying a big fee through the general fund for that for taxes, aren't we?
Well, I mean, it is, but the general fund has to, I mean, the admin fees, that one percent.
That's.
That goes to the general fund, so it's covering that, that's like forty thousand or something, so our K C I. Um, you know, the, the alien and some of the postage, that, that covers all of that stuff that we're going to do that.
Okay.
So, and.
Somehow we have to map that, so like the transfer is a budget.
Well, the interest, so even like the interest that we receive, the cutting to it, worked it out to where like the interest we received off of the general fund or something, I don't know. A lot of the fees for the general fund, we have a lot of N S F charges, which we never followed before and. And I follow them too. We never.
People pay, not us.
Yeah, no, yeah, not us, sorry, but, but in the next one. Um, but yeah, we had, we never collected those, that's thirty dollars a pop, they can be given from ten, fifteen, thirty dollars a pop of those, and we had a lot of them this year.
You mean, oh, hold on a second, so, um, like raise your tab, like raise checkout and then I have the fun?
Are they closing down for the check clears or, or they actually paid us the amount they should be, so they're like, oh, it's not the time down then.
So that'll be a serial.
Oh.
So it, yeah, I have a lot of those for you.
We're looking at just in centennial, or that centennial limit, we're looking at so far fifteen hundred.
Always playing my age's budget of the night out on her. Started way up.
Oh, I gave my original back, um, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You don't get that.
Right, that's, she would know. But that's, they want.
Legal settlement, okay.
Only still.
Yeah, for the tag, that is giving forty-five dollars this year.
Subsidizing.
Yeah.
So keep, keep things down.
Okay, but I like that, it's about to be a little more.
Okay, so, I mean.
So the tax admin case for K C I.
These raws, that's the.
Everything to do with.
Yes, everything that we had, yeah, so mail.
So the way it's showing on the other one, is it showing in the trust budget, versus coming out of.
Well, it all comes, so here's the thing too, and I don't know if you guys got my email. I read through M T A, that deputy treasurer's, hey, come go with general fund out under the officers that they're hiring, so.
Seven thousand so far.
Then we have the.
Isn't that all in the general fund anyway?
They all just paid out of general fund.
So.
But the budget, it doesn't, shouldn't reflect under the triber's budget. Kind of makes sense to know that, um, but as far as like the admin fees income, forty-nine thousand for taxes, that should cover the K C I, any bills of those, which is the postage, human mailing, um. Those are the kinds of.
K C I is like such a, but.
No, K C I is the company that uses to print and mail our bill of taxes. So it should cover all that and then, yeah. I'm just reaching, I need to get that postage for those that come back.
Yeah. You go when they give you the, right? To come back.
I don't know how much was spent on K C I last year.
But I think it's under the treasure budget.
Yeah, it does, I mean, it's still on the, I don't know if it doesn't matter, but.
So.
I think we should not ask budget, like the election budget.
Yeah, the K C I, I guess it should come out of the tax budget, not out of the treasure budget, just like the election, come out of the election budget and not out of the budget. She covered that indeed.
No.
And I think with that forty-nine thousand dollars, I don't think there's an issue with.
Well, I'm just looking for places that we can reduce what we have budgeted from last year. So the thing that I see under the township board control is the legal settlement, that saves us fifteen thousand right there, cause that was a one-time deal. And.
Well, attorney, those are other professional services.
What is?
I cannot look it up because I can't open my QuickBooks while I'm recording this meeting.
Um, that contingency fund there. Why do we have nothing in there?
Because we didn't have any left over.
Can I? Go printing and publishing, holy cow.
That is, um, website as well as newspaper. And Tom was publishing in two newspapers for everything that he did.
What?
Yeah, and so it was a huge amount.
It is lower to five thousand though, in twenty-one, twenty-five.
Also, we discovered that we had to publish our minutes, so that added to.
Yeah, which one is the website?
It's under printing, publishing.
Is what?
Under printing and publishing.
No, I mean, is it West Shore Publishing?
No, that's newspaper.
So the only website in that that I can see is for four sixty-eight, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars out of ten thousand.
I would have to look.
You're looking on the profit and loss for that?
Mm-hmm. One oh one point, one oh one point nine hundred, here's to you.
Then holy cow, when you finally internet.
Elgafis News, one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and one shot for Elgafis News.
Yeah.
Is, is there, is there a law?
That's why we changed there to, we changed it to only print in one paper.
The newspaper that is most widely distributed is what it says in the M T A.
And you only have to do one because you have the internet and post it on our webpage.
Well, we did decide that, we voted to only use Elgafis News.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that will be reduced.
Except for, um. Things that may pertain to accounting related issue, I think we're still having that option to do that.
So, so you don't think the voice is widely, she takes it everywhere?
There's not even enough voices.
Okay, so you're gonna spend less than a hundred dollars, what do you cut that to half?
I'm sorry.
Are you kind of printing a hundred and a half?
Well, well, it's set at five thousand dollars on the thing right now, I don't think that that's too high to have it for, you know, the end of the year total.
Yeah.
That's probably the reasonable, but you could, but the amount before that, it's a big scenario. Uh, that thirteen thousand nine hundred in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four is way up, way up. I think five thousand is a good number there.
What does the municipal underwriters involve, what does that all that cover?
That's our insurance.
I know, but what is it covering under insurance?
All of the township. And fire department, and the fire department reimburses for theirs.
Okay.
Are we no longer paying MERS?
No, we still have to pay that, that's a monthly, three forty-seven a month.
Okay, so it's not budgeted?
Cause I think we have to keep it, I don't know what the law is on that, but I think we have to have, I don't know.
But I mean, wouldn't that be in our budget some?
Well, it was under fire department, because they were using it, but they're no longer using it.
Yeah. So this is only for October twenty-second?
What?
This report.
This one.
This isn't. No, this is through December.
If the task is October twenty-second.
What are you looking at?
April first through October twenty-second.
I don't give a.
I don't know what you're looking at.
There's no transaction detail.
Yeah, the profit plus, yeah.
Well, ours says April through June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This says April through October, the one I have.
Yeah, oh, you, that was last, that was the first one I gave you guys.
I'm having.
So here was another question, Jim, that, um, the assessor asked, we were using V S N A for assessing. We've been using V S N A for assessing.
No, she wanted to know if it was included in the cloud, because right now it's not cloud.
In separate.
All right, so we're not changing salaries, let's just pu- plug some numbers in here, we gotta get through this, we ha- we're down to forty minutes. Down to forty minutes, so keeping salaries for trustees the same right now. Um, office admin. Are we going to reduce hours, we're gonna keep the same hours?
We're doing twenty hours, we were gonna advertise twenty hours a week. Um, but the hours would put the individual, they're at the office at sixteen. I think currently nineteen fifty seven, so.
Right now, if you look at the third quarter budget report. She's, she's right on for the sixteen thousand. I mean. With her not working the last month, so I, I don't think we can reduce that at all. If. We're hiring for the same amount.
Yep, same amount.
Alright.
Up to twenty dollars.
Can't change social security or Medicare, those. Not early sure. MERS, we're gonna check on, we might, we didn't budget for that last year at all, but. Office supplies. We have to use our office supplies, but.
For office administrator, uh, we got sixteen thousand, right?
Yeah.
Um, and and this is for the rest of the year, is it, or we look at fiscal year?
For the fiscal year, sixteen thousand for the fiscal year.
And how many hours does she, uh, where is that position, um?
That was four hours a day.
Sixteen hours?
Four days a week, sixteen hours, yeah.
Okay.
Times four.
One of the things with, with our first bookkeeper.
That's the. Annual.
I'm assuming bookkeeper, so you under office, uh, supplies or software.
I didn't really wanna put it under office supplies, that's why I put it under that. I don't have a line item for software.
No, I mean, you have a great woman, who's not a bookkeeper. Bookkeeper be like a payroll thing, um, we pay that annually, each week one? Is that payroll?
I think so.
Oh.
Um, I'm, yeah, said, man, at that hour, we rate twenty hours a week, fifty two weeks, it's twenty thousand, three ninety two.
Really?
Yeah.
So we under budgeted that?
Yeah. For the office secretary.
What, what did you say?
Well, I took the nineteen fifty seven.
Hmm.
Times twenty equals three ninety one forty. Uh, fifty two times fifty two, right, uh, twenty thousand three fifty two.
So you bumped that up to twenty one thousand?
Yes, but that's also figured that twenty hours a week counts, twenty sixteen as well. Okay. But I'm glad that we're over budgeting a little because I have. And a surplus next time you're even at the time. Um, sixteen two eighty two, if it's sixteen hours a week, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's why.
Twenty one is set it at twenty, and if they don't best work with my hours.
So we have office supplies and postage all together.
Again, that's figuring out nineteen fifty seven and thinking we're gonna give them a raise.
Yeah, I think of that, I think that.
I mean, we could.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to find somebody to go.
Or an office admin?
Yeah.
Why do they have all that? Aren't they going to be twenty dollars an hour, it's good enough?
I know, we're pushed on time now, but we have this little worksheet here, we could.
I already told you what I thought.
Well, let's, let's try to get through uh. Just the township board control.
Okay.
So.
I'm just thinking of our salaries, ours are a championship level.
Yeah. Um.
Numbers won't quite be right.
Right. When we get down to those, those are all under.
Except the employees are on top.
Yeah, but trustees are gonna stay the same right now, secretary, we just bumped up.
And I think that if we pay deputies a little bit more, I think that it would increase each of them about three thousand or something.
And we could do that, but right now we're still over budgeted.
The S and A is gonna be, um, I think a total, not on each department, but if you have it here, it'll be a total for the general one. It won't be under assessing the taxes and, um, it should just be a total.
So that'll be under township board, under other contracts.
Well, I mean, I will separate it into S and A contract and not just have it under contract, it'd be a financial.
Yeah, I was thinking about doing like the dot O one, dot O two, and but each one, well, attorney.
Attorney goes around, yeah.
Yeah. For like, yeah, the E P S, um, Pure Water Works, D L S, all of those.
So a little chat with the B S and A people yesterday, or the, boy, I can't remember which, but. Uh, was on question of the entry stuff.
Mm-hmm. And how many?
Yeah, all they're gonna do is enter the totals. But not, not every transaction is gonna be entered into B S A, but when we switch over, it'll all be. The totals will be carried over and start new on a particular day.
We'll have to discuss, we can go back, we can enter the totals starting April first. And then we can enter all those transactions, so we have a clear B S and A, I mean, from start to finish, or we can enter totals starting August and have these two system for the opposite. So we'll have to discuss what we want to do.
Yeah, we got archive the old QuickBooks stuff, so then we'll have the individual transactions.
That's what I'm.
Alright, I'm uh, I'm suggesting we reduce the office supplies and postage under the township board control. Down to five thousand because right now. We have not used, I think, uh, about three thousand, so if we add another thousand for that. We would only have used four thousand for this year.
Okay, so we're gonna lower that to five?
Yeah, I think we should lower that to five. Um, the attorney. We, we, we budgeted.
We sure need to, I think, but.
I still.
That's, that's not gonna change our.
Well, Marshall versus cheaper.
Yeah.
Versus three twenty five an hour, you're looking at about two fifty.
Think we pay one fifty an hour, no.
Do you, for being a municipality, so it's probably gonna be cheaper than.
I think that's what it is, honestly, I mean.
I don't know, I'm pretty sure that.
Either way, if we get a new one or an old one, we're still gonna need about twenty five thousand or whatever it is.
Well, we haven't used twenty five thousand.
We used what, about sixteen, I think.
No, not even, we, we still have the. Let's see if it's forty four, fifty four, maybe. About seven thousand of the twenty five thousand is what we've used this year. For the first three quarters.
Twenty two.
So about ten thousand. So I, I mean, if we wanna be careful and cautious, we can drop it to twenty.
Let's do that.
Okay.
I think that's. Wild.
The audit, auditor was ninety five hundred last year, so that's not even on here, we have to add that.
Ninety five hundred last year.
Unless we put it under professional services, but no, we, no, that's not even high enough for that.
Ten thousand?
Auditor has their own line item.
Yeah, and I don't know why I didn't, we didn't budget anything for it last year.
So.
Missed that.
Ten, eleven, twelve?
Um, it was ninety five hundred.
So far.
No, we'll be.
He, yeah, he just, he just raised it last year, so I don't think that he will be any.
Ten thousand?
Plus we paid extra, we played, we, we paid extra because he had to do reconcile my account to the audit.
And Tom struck.
And he cleaned up my QuickBooks.
Okay, so let's put ten. Okay, and we're putting that for, is that a write-in? Yeah, yeah.
On the auditor.
Point is interesting here, yeah, that's the. Audit. Which saved you money already.
Contract services, I really need to look at. What all is under that, but it's a pretty accurate amount right now. But I think that will have to stay, well, no, we're adding, we're gonna add V S and A, which was that an annual fee?
Yeah.
I have to bump it up to like seventy five.
I mean, that's your interest and then the fire.
The sixty that was there previously, where are we at with that?
Um, right now.
So that's.
Forty two, fifty, we're at fifty thousand. And we have a full quarter left, so.
We're gonna look at that possibly today.
It's probably right, right on.
Just carry it over sixty.
But you have to add V S and A.
Let's make it even eighty, that's twenty thousand.
Well, I did seventy five.
You want it eighty?
Seventy five, well, yeah, eighty.
Eighty, okay, try eighty.
Me, for contract service, contract service, yeah, there's a, you know.
And then I'm not sure what other professional services.
Survey. Well. Right now, uh, well, actually, it's already been surveyed, but we have other alleys that are.
So leave that at twenty five hundred?
Yeah, it's not really a right away, so I'm seeing how to measure over. Technically, it's not a road because it's an abandoned alley, but.
Thirty minutes? Okay, so I'll leave that at twenty five hundred?
I'm good with that twenty five.
Okay.
Well. I, I know it's gonna be a little more for the survey thing, but honestly, I'm not, what other surveying? Yeah, let's just leave it at twenty five, we can adjust it if we need to, I guess. Utilities, I'm not sure for bank.
Bank fees, we've got so far, it's almost seventeen hundred dollars. Yeah, for the first three quarters, and we didn't budget anything, so we have to budget about two thousand dollars for that at least.
In twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
For other professional services?
No, that's right.
The others professional services, we put a point five on it. Okay, we love that a lot, right? Yeah. So bank fees, two thousand.
Utilities are ridiculous, we are over budgeted by almost twenty thousand on that. So we did not have enough in utilities.
Utilities.
We even had shut off, you know, just.
Oh, that just happens because they get the check before the, or they, after the new bill comes out. It's, it's never actually in shut off, they've already gotten the payment by the time we get the shut off.
So why don't we just pick a number right in the middle there of the last two, uh, if it was twenty five, thirty five years before that, let's put it right at thirty.
But we're already twenty thousand over budget, and we started another sort of.
Fifty thousand dollars. A thousand bucks a week for it.
And we're looking at that just this last year, looking at what would pay for phone, internet and camera.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the total utilities. They're all totaled together, eating their like their televisions.
Yes. Guess when you think about it that way, that maybe not see that much, fifteen hundred bucks a month, and a hundred fifty.
Going for the twenty five thousand. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Twenty five thousand utilities?
Yeah, she said it was thirty or something right now. Already this year, so it'll probably be close to thirty five by the end. That would you put down to thirty five for that?
Uh, that's where eighteen thousand over what we budgeted. Eighteen seven fifty.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah. When you look at those utility bills, I mean, there's so many. Yeah.
That will help a little, that will help a little.
That's almost a thousand dollars in two weeks for that LED center, two months.
Yeah, I know, and I did check on it.
So we did budget sixty two fifty.
This one out here, I think that's the old style, that's borrowing a lot of electricity right out here, this one, that one alone.
Xenon bulbs and.
Yeah, I did switch, look at all that stuff, maybe parts of the rack that'll be something we can.
I had a friend in Traverse City who started a business like that, he would just go into companies.
Yeah.
And, and write down what their bulbs were and how much logic she was gonna save per month and.
I know a Free O A guy, Petosky, that did that, and he stopped Free O A and having to take so much money.
Yeah, anyways, uh, okay, let's go.
Our insurance is gonna be, um, if it stays the same, it'll be twenty three thousand. I, because I think the fire department pays about seventeen of the total that we paid.
So, and twenty three, so sixteen five?
Yeah, yeah.
We went with fifty thousand for the utilities, right?
Yeah.
Bring publishing this by?
Yeah. And then I.
MTA dues.
I'm trying to find where that's at on my report, yeah, I don't. So it's probably under professional services. But I don't know. I'll have to find out, I'll have to look that up, so I'm gonna put a question mark in it. There isn't annual dues that we're paying.
And sixteen five, that is our insurance now.
Uh, it's more than that. It is thirty eight thousand one hundred and ninety one hours. But seventeen of that is for the department, yes.
So we, we didn't give ourselves twenty thousand to work with their October agents.
I said twenty three because. I mean, what if it goes up? We don't have to under budget.
And if it's left over, it's just as good for us.
Right, we can do that. Um, schooling training, that's the trustees and office administrators, so I don't mind.
Okay, well, when you look at schooling and training under like, say, supervisory control, aren't those done in second?
Yes.
Okay, so why do we need it on top unless it's for other than representative?
Schooling training for office admin and for trustees would be under township board control.
Thousand bucks.
We have our own sucker, yes. We have other travels on, yeah.
Um, yeah, but I'm remembering right.
School and training.
Okay, thousand?
Yeah, they're gonna go to a thousand, that's for other than electric officials, you know, we're gonna have training in our own respective.
Okay, do I see two thousand on your sheet or one thousand?
Like one thousand.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
We need equipment.
I don't think we have any equipment that we, I mean, I. I can't think of any equipment that we would need to buy for the township board.
Bow cabinets.
Possibly, yeah. No, that's not explained on. That would be obviously why. So, I'm gonna cut that, I'm gonna say zero on it.
I don't even have equipment, what I'm looking at.
That's right under schooling training?
Okay, I've got you, did you see under schooling training?
Really? Oh, well, maybe we took it off, or no. Would like to have contingency, but right now we don't have.
Yeah.
I know, we got a couple versions.
Okay.
Probably different versions.
I, you know, is it, are those the originals? Because I, yeah, um, I asked Margaret, she's like, no. But I guess I could do this instead of that.
Maybe this is, this is, looks like the last numbers.
The last thing I tried to copy, then we call it, I don't know, say so.
These are the same, it just has three years on mine, has the previous year, and then all these columns are the same as these, so that's. Kind of the same thing, it just doesn't have the twenty three, twenty four.
Okay. But you're, you guys are talking things that I don't have listened to here, but.
Okay, you don't have it put in on there?
No.
Maybe you're still.
Yeah, I guess you are.
Uh, pages all over everything on this out.
Yeah, it's, it's totally different.
Well, that. That increased our township order control to two hundred and seventy one. Three hundred, that's the total I got.
I'm just gonna move that, like that, yeah, it's on here.
Does it have? Oh, that is an old one.
Yeah, and what's the amount for equipment? I, I know I asked five times.
We did zero.
We did zero. I don't know of any equipment that we knew, or how would we even be in there?
Twenty minutes, this is the total I got, so we've actually increased it.
We've increased it?
That's not surprising.
Okay.
Okay, and that was zero contingency.
Yeah.
Ain't nothing gonna happen.
And I left social security and Medicare the same.
Is that under MERS, that's the retirement?
I didn't put anything in MERS because I think we're gonna cancel that.
Are we required by law to do that?
I, I don't know. That's the question.
Leo, I think, put it into that.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's a hand fee, that he collects on it now, because it's a pension, but.
Leo Zinger made me talk about?
Yeah, I think he was the only one.
Did he pay him at his home? Like, he's collecting on it, do you have to keep paying into it, or enter a fee into it for when he's collecting on it?
No, I think it, I think it'd just be for us to keep the account, but he has his own account.
So you're paying, so we have any account, no, we don't have any.
Right, there's nobody in there.
And we're paying how much?
Three forty-seven a month.
Still?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we need to look back.
I think that's.
Yeah.
Who we had on the body.
Yeah, we may still have a few jobs that we didn't.
No, I've talked, the only people that were on there were very, right enough employees that were contributing, but stopped contributing, but still had benefits.
Yeah, still managers, like, yeah, they're not pretty.
Nobody's contributed for years.
No.
Office secretary would be put to that twenty.
So, uh, yeah, we've, we've upped that up to twenty.
It's gonna take your account, you know, like, every, yeah, that's very good. Okay, and this, our trustees, you just left that at eleven, I don't think that's gonna go up.
I had a question on that, um, I know we're short on time, but. I'm gonna start doing the parks and recs, uh, meetings, and I'm, uh, I, I wanted to get approval by the board, do you pay for that?
Oh, yeah, that is a. Well, no, that's a big share.
Well, he wants to go to the meetings.
No, board reps, board reps get fifty dollars a meeting.
Okay, well, fifty, because I was looking at this from, um, Thursday meeting, and what's this, what's this something?
There is a, yeah, this one, please, please, meaning, yeah, it's, it's right here, I think. No, it's, yeah.
Oh, board review.
Okay, yeah, this will be your chairperson.
Oh, then look to the other side of the review member and the board review. Okay, so do I need board approval, uh, you say it's fifty dollars an hour?
Fifty dollars a meeting.
A meeting, okay, but do I need board, or just writing in my timesheet, or do I need board approval for?
Wait, we have to appoint you as a board rep.
Well, well, I could do it temporarily. I wanna temp, I wanna see how it goes, sorry.
Oh, okay.
So, and I meet the, they meet the first, uh, week of.
First, next, uh, first one, we are the one.
And we're not gonna have a meeting until now, so I'd like to get approval today if necessary.
Oh, sure, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, I make a motion to get paid to attend parks and recs.
So can, uh, can we?
Why don't we temporarily appoint him as a board member? Or as a board representative to parks and recs?
Yeah, I, I just trial basis, I wanna see how it works, you know? I'm really flooded with just the trustee stuff and I.
So that'll make we change that motion to temporarily appoint, so that you do get paid?
Yes.
And then if you don't like it, you can just say, I don't wanna do that anymore.
Yeah. That sounds like a good one.
So that is your motion.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
And, uh, that's all in favor, does everybody, uh?
I'm in favor of that.
About to.
Can I, can I ask myself?
Yes, yes, again.
The past board voted that the chairs of the different committees received fifty dollars per meeting, but no one ever, did never ask, and I, it was never been offered to Andrew.
I told him about it.
Okay, I just said, no, it was over that, I don't know if Andrew heard, said, well, when, you know, it's.
So technically, Kelly, you get that to, or, I mean, Michael?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, we have eleven thousand budgeted for trustees, fifty-five hundred for trustees.
Yeah, and that's actually, we have not used that much, um. Let's see. We've used twenty-five hundred a month. So about seventy-five hundred of that eleven thousand.
You mean a quarter.
Oh, yeah, a quarter, sorry, yes, a quarter. So, yeah, I mean, we're almost there, but not quite.
Okay, I don't think that would be out of your trustee pay, that would come out of.
No, that is trustee pay.
Yeah, but I don't think.
Oh, no, that doesn't.
Okay, so we don't need, all right, so we don't need to adjust eleven thousand?
No.
All right. Sorry. You're not supposed to have that on grant.
Right, where would that come out of? It, it has to come. It's not ever been used, but.
Surely somebody put in for, get paid to be a chairperson.
Is this, I don't know if you can, somewhere first, actually, you know what? That you guys are going over.
Yes, it is right here, it's in this budget, down here, rep, committee chair. So board rep or committee chair. And we have budget in our.
Lady chair, representative compensation.
And mileage.
And miles?
I think it's the original.
Two miles. Two miles round trip, four miles, that's sixty-five cents.
It was.
I give those to you.
Two fifty, we had one, three bucks.
No, or.
Do you not have some?
I don't have it.
It, it's actually the same thing, except that it has another column, twenty-three, twenty-four. But it still has the same twenty-four, twenty-five information on, on the two column. But I can make a quick copy of this and.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Right, did you, did you need a copy of that? So, probably.
Ten minutes, we have ten minutes, so under the supervisor control, um. Jim, do you think for the whole year, you won't have a deputy, or do you wanna keep five hundred in there just in case?
Do you get your deputy out of your control?
Well, that's how it's always been on the budget.
According to MTA, the definite general.
It's just a general thing, it shouldn't come out of the. We, I don't, that's why I read, I sent you guys an email.
There was Tom's deputy, she got, she collected down just, or dealing with the home company and all that, she never claimed anything after that.
No, no, she never hardly ever got paid. Jim, do you think you'll spend five hundred dollars on office supplies?
Uh, I can't imagine I would be holding that if, uh, that's what the number was there.
Is adding office?
Uh, we need to add schooling and training for, um, so salary stays the same, eighteen four seventy-eight.
Well.
Uh.
I'm okay with that, but not everybody's salary is gonna stay the same.
Right.
Are we, okay, so deputy, deputy supervisor, that number gonna stay the same, we're gonna take that out?
I, I think we take that out for now, and then we adjust the budget if he decides to hire one.
Okay.
Uh, we'll leave office supplies the same, just in case, we do need to add schooling and training because he is a supervisor who would like to be trained. So, um, what do we have typically, five hundred, that would cover MTA conference and. A couple of other classes. And, and, so I'm thinking, yeah, we'll take the five hundred from the deputy supervisor and add that to schooling and training. That doesn't really change anything. So his, his total stays the same.
Jim, did you get for me, I don't know?
It is, yeah, but there's additional for you. That we're talking all the time, okay, sorry, I didn't know, okay.
It just whenever you want.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I think.
I mean, previously.
Uh, yeah, right, they have different little seminars.
What do you guys put for a study?
Twenty-five, I think.
Twenty-five hundred?
One, twenty thousand.
Oh, geez. Which was.
Previously.
Coming off six, six years of law foods. So, as. So, this fiscal year spent eight thousand in insurance, so you put twenty thousand for safety.
Because we still have another quarter that's not on there.
What is under, um, other professional services in, uh, your?
That we don't know, yeah, I can't open up my cookbook.
You have twenty-five thousand for total?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five hundred.
No, other professional services for this, for this fiscal year so far, is twenty-five thousand dollars?
That's not what I have. The cold chairs. I only have four hundred and eighty-four in that.
I see the journey, you're looking at the journey.
Do you have different things under other professional services than I have? Your attorneys, eight thousand, other professional services is twenty-five hundred, twenty-five thousand.
Um, I've got, no.
We'll have to compare, do you?
Twenty, twenty for other professional services.
So when you run the report, you can run it to look like this, and leave off fire fund, leave off taxes and everything, and then you can look at a line item, that's why I'm searching through. That individual, but this one right here says other professional services, twenty-five thousand dollars, so I don't know what, we didn't under that, but that's what the checks that we entered went under. And then there's another, other, other professional services.
Be a perfectly even number like that, if it's an actual.
Well, it's not even, it's twenty-five, eight oh one, I was just saying.
Okay, okay.
And, and I'm saying that my report doesn't show that, so I don't know what you have under other professional services. Well, I know, and that's why we've been wanting your report, to lay it out like that, that's why we've been asking, because our report would not be the same as your report. So that's what I'm saying, I don't have that in mind, I can't with anything. I'm not getting clear, uh, because I don't know exactly what it is you're looking for, that's what I keep saying. It is the same report you did, but it's broke down without, but we. Christine, you haven't reached out and asked.
Yeah.
I said I could do it for you and show you how to do it, but she, but I'm the one that would show you how to do it. And I, I'm the one, so this report right here, the way this is up, it eliminates the taxes, eliminates the, the fire fund, eliminates the roads, and all it has is the general stuff on it. And it's not detailed, it's not itemized, so you can look at the flat out numbers, and then you can be able to click in. And see what you actually spent on those, but as this states right here, other professional services is twenty-five thousand dollars that's been spent. And then there's an other contract services of six thousand. We don't know what that, and then the attorneys, eight thousand, auditors, nine thousand. And then due to employees, twenty-five thousand, due to federal government, thirty thousand, but I mean. Yeah, we wouldn't know this on this here, we would need it on, on yours, that's what I'm asking, what is other professional services for twenty-five thousand? I can't with the money.
Yes, okay, that's, um.
And we're down to eight minutes. The building is rented. Well, that's just because she did, instead of doing this fiscal year today, she just did this fiscal year, we'll show June. It'll just go to the end of June, but we don't have it through your kinds of religious, is that, so, this, oh, okay, these will be the same.
Yeah, but it's only June of twenty twenty-four, no. This is in our current one, this is.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
This fiscal year, this fiscal year. Yeah, that's what we have, three quarters.
Like that, so June twenty twenty-four.
Up to December.
That's kind of what we're doing.
And the attorney BSI, you know, we don't have any other, um, lawsuits or anything like that, that we're working with the attorney.
No, but he did charge a crazy amount to go enforce that ticket.
To enforce.
It costs like twelve hundred dollars to have a lawyer prosecute, well.
For a two hundred.
Certain lawyer services for the two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty dollar ticket, was it really worth it?
No, but we have to enforce our performances.
What would have been nice in the past years for that is detailed information as much as possible for the attorneys, they call them.
Well, think of the tax going with the non-sufficient funds that literally states in the, in the law, that if we have to take them to, if we have to the attorney law and pay them the court. That they pay the pastor, they pay three times, which is three times for the coffee, what, how they, their tax income. So why is it that?
This is a noise violation.
Yeah, but I mean, if we have to the attorney.
First, your second offense, noise violation.
Has to be more than violation on that thing now.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, that is nothing to sneeze at first, you know.
Oh, it's crazy, pay twelve hundred dollars for, you know, whatever.
Yeah, well, he's driving all the way from Tiger City, you know?
I know, I get it, yeah, I mean, it's hard to, I mean. All right, I think we're gonna have to stop because we have five minutes to get out of here.
I was thinking.
So, uh, we're stopping at election control, and I will plug these numbers into my spreadsheet and then resum that out to everybody, so we'll all have a new working copy.
Yeah.
Does that sound good? Okay. And then we can get together, and, I mean, we have to get together to reconcile anyways, so.
Next Thursday, twenty-seventh, is there any conflict there?
No.
Could have, to come together to sign the thing and approve it before the end of the month anyway, even if it's just for a ten minute meeting.
So it's a ten minute meeting on the twenty-seventh?
No, I'm saying. We have to come together to sign it, but, um.
It's, it's not really, I mean, we don't. We just prove it as the proposed, got to, and, um, put it out for the public and.
Correct, and then we approve it in, in March.
So next meeting, Thursday?
Next meeting Thursday, I guess we should do that at seven PM.
We're at.
Here, make sure it's open.
I do have one other quick thing that we could do, and that is I. I, uh, made that resolution for approving all the new board dinners.
Meeting.
Are you checking the thing?
Yeah, the twenty-seventh is a, a third, I'm good for the.
No, 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 I mean, our contract calendar, so we can see if it's open.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Actually, I got it right here, I think.
Are you checking on it? Okay, go ahead.
I would see them. Not to rush or anything, but I hate as many as we can.
They have chairs and tables, they're not the, the chairs and tables.
Why is she fucking, can I throw one comment?
Yeah.
Attorney fees? If, if it's a simple thing, why can't we internally handle that and argue in court? If it's something simple, uh. You know what I mean, cut and dried stuff?
Well, she, she had a lawyer there to represent her, and.
What's wrong?
Fortunately, yeah, fortunately, in that particular case or whatever, we had a, a resident that was the complaint filer, we didn't file that complaint, but. Yeah, our zoning guy was there, uh. I was there.
If she lost, Joan, it's in the judgment, usually have only the, I'm like, the community, so it's not.
Is that what we wanna do? Is charge attorney fees with all our, I mean, that would be fourteen hundred and fifty dollars for a noise violation.
We gotta get out of here in two minutes.
I think you guys have handled that.
Maybe they'd think twice about it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, if I went to a country that's gonna change the, I don't know, my, my. I think our, I think our policy does, uh, need it.
You got anybody here from that next group?
Just one, and I talked to her, she's, she's not too upset about it right at twelve.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's gonna look in.
You can print it when you get to the office, I'll bring it up on your book. All right, meeting adjourned.
Yes, we'll do the, oh, there's the date. If we have just one.
That's the resolution.
Yep. Okay, I checked out the resolution for setting our Thursday night meeting dates, when, this is required, stuff we got both. Again, I didn't find the conflicts with all the Thursdays, so. Again, I didn't find the conflicts with all the Thursdays, so if everybody's in agreement, the. Thursdays are, uh. I can read this real quick if you like, or if you. Yeah, it's just.
Do I just need to sign it?
No, no.
I'm good, Thursdays. Christine, is your meeting done?
Okay, so on the, uh, resolution number, what would be?
I don't know. Have we done resolutions?
The next resolution number, I believe, I believe it is two, but.
I think it's two.
Yeah. We're required by general law, or general law townships are required to post their meeting dates. Uh, I've identified all of them right here, Thursdays for the month, for each month.
Somebody pulled a merge.
From April to March. All those, uh, she probably take a little. I'll make, I'll make the motion that we do this, uh, operate.
I'll second it. Roll call vote, Michelle Jackson?
Here, yeah.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes, Jim, with you?
Yes.
All right. Absent Bob Underhill, motion carried. And. The adjournment, a motion to adjourn. At twelve oh one.
See, only one minute over this time. Yeah, but.
Okay, I will, when I figure out what number resolution this is, I'll post this in the newspaper, it's required.
So we also need the other resolution that I told you about, we need to update that one.